Good morning. I would like to call the Calbright Board of Trustees meetings to order this morning on September 20th, or excuse me, it's not September 20th, it's November 15th at 9:00 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, Board Liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q and A feature to address the board up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Teri, would you please call the roll?
Hilda Guard Aguinaldo.
President.
Darius Anderson. Amy Costa.
Present.
Josh Elizondo.
Present.
Alicia Escobar Correa. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Jolina Grande.
Here.
Pam Haynes.
Here.
Kevin Hall.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis.
Present.
Paul Medina.
Present.
Jennifer Perry.
Here.
Bill Rawlings.
Present.
Roy Chavazian.
Here.
Valerie Shaw. Los Villalobos.
Present.
And Joseph Williams.
Here.
We have a core of President Costa.
Great, thank you. Now with that, we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to call on Board Member Villalobos to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. If you will please stand. And you can begin after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We do have a little bit of discussion on the order of the agenda this morning. And we have an order of operations issues. So with regard to the order of the agenda, we'll need to actually take up an action item this morning before we consider the consent agenda as one of the personnel hires is contingent upon approval of the action item. So what we're going to do is we're going to take up action item number 4.5, which is the Robert Half addendum before we consider the consent agenda. Does anybody have any objections to that?
Madam Chair, we need to pull up, pull off, which item is it? I'm sorry. General Counsel, the General Counsel item.
Okay. Point two. Okay, so we're going to pull 4.2. And with that, if there's no objections, I do believe we need to go to 4.5. Can we start that presentation, please?
Good morning, President Costa. And board. My name is Vivek Bhas. I recently joined as the Chief Product Officer at Calbright College. It's a pleasure to meet you all this morning. I'm here today to recommend for your approval the fourth amendment to the master service agreement with Robert Half, as well as a payment to Robert Half to hire one of our current service providers as a full-time employee. To give you some background, Calbright has been using Robert Half's technical staffing services to provide access to highly trained technical personnel since December of 2021. We had a master services agreement and subsequent amendments. A current and fully executed amendment of the agreement has been placed as July 1st of 2022 in the amount of $99,000, and it expires on December 31st, 2022. Now, as you may know, we have been growing rapidly in terms of student enrollment in the last several months. So since July alone, we have gone from 1,076 students to, as of yesterday, 1,491 students. That's about a more than a 45% increase in student enrollment. So in light of that, the services provided by Robert Half are critical to Calbright because they provide us the opportunity to onboard technical personnel very quickly to support our increasing student population, our faculty and staff, and thereby deliver on the mandate and the strategic vision. So based on Calbright's needs in this area, and as we continue to work diligently to fill our technical positions with full-time employees, Calbright has exhausted the funds in the most recent agreement amendment prior to the expiration of the term. And thus, Calbright seeks approval of the Fourth Amendment to the Master Services Agreement to authorize additional funds for the remainder of term, which brings the total funds above the President and CEO approval threshold. So specifically, we are seeking an additional $31,448, which will bring the total value of the agreement to $1,130,448 through December 31st. In addition, Calbright would like to hire one of the current service providers, Mr. Kyrie Hickerson, from Robert Half as a full-time end-user support technician. Mr. Hickerson has been providing end-user support to Calbright students, faculty and staff since February of 2022, and has been committed for timely and highly satisfactory resolution of ID issues. Given Mr. Hickerson's intimate knowledge of existing Calbright systems, technical and client service skills, it would be strategically and economically advantageous for Calbright to hire Mr. Hickerson as a full-time employee to continue the high-quality technical supports. So Calbright requests authorization to pay Robert Half dollars $2,500 to hire Mr. Hickerson. So in summary, we're recommending approval of the Fourth Amendment to the Master Service Agreement with Robert Half, increasing it by $31,448 to a total of $130,448, and approve the payment of $2,500 to Robert Half to hire Mr. Kyrie Hickerson.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to open up to my colleagues if there's any board discussion or comments. I see a couple of hands raised. Why don't we start with Board Member Hall, and then we'll move on to Board Member Grande. And then Pam, I'm going to ask you if there's any comments in the room there that you can help me kind of navigate that.
Sure.
Thanks, President Costa. Recognizing that we're always under the microscope, especially on our finances, my question is, were these amendments anticipated from the get-go, or are these unanticipated costs that we now have to amend the contract and increase the budget in some way?
So some of these amendments are unanticipated as we try to work diligently to work to hire full-time employees. Market conditions, as we all know, have been challenging. So we have had pretty small candidate pools to pick from. But as we work towards hiring at full-time employees, we're taking some temporary measures to keep, to support our increasing student population. So some of these amendments are unanticipated in nature.
I'll just add one thing, too. You know, we anticipate at times, when, especially when we see such an acceleration in enrollment, to be able to make sure that we have the staffing in place, both on a permanent basis, but also on an as-needed basis when we see those, that rapid growth in enrollment, in order to be able to surface the students that are coming in the door. So I think one thing is that it's exciting that we need more support and help, and as it takes time to hire folks on a full-time basis, we need to be able to flex, to be flexible enough to accommodate those enrollments with the highest quality and level of support on the technology side.
And just follow-up question. I mean, I come from a different perspective, hiring for law firms, but we have found that it's very expensive to use agencies, and it is challenging to hire anyone, it seems like, these days. But is it feasible, or is it just not at all practical for Calbright to do LinkedIn and other forums that don't charge as much as an agency?
We exhaust basically every resource available to us in order to identify both the permanent talent that we need, as well as on the contract basis. On the contracting side, we follow a very diligent process outlined in our Contract and Procurement Manual that requires us to shop for the best deals, especially when we get to phases of contracts that indicate higher dollar amounts. So we are judicious, and we do monitor fairly carefully the costs associated with various contracting mechanisms. The difficulty, especially when you're recruiting certain types of roles for contractual support, like end-user support or things like that, are best facilitated through a firm rather than going out to try to individually contract with said individuals. It's a very inefficient use of time and resources for us to do that. And so, you know, the short answer is, it does vary. The longer, more detailed answer I gave you is also that in that variation, we're very careful about monitoring along the way where we are contracting and how we are doing that contracting work.
Okay, thank you.
So odd, I can't exactly see you.
So can you see my hand?
I can, but barely, honestly, and I got my readers on. We're going to go to Board Member Grande, and then Pam, and I'll turn it over to you if you have a comment or any of the other board members there in the room.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Costa. Mine is just a clarification question. I noticed that the contract extension is for Robert Half Talent Solutions, yet our agenda item almost makes it seem as though it's an individualized contract just to Robert Half. So is this contract to an individual or to a company? And the second part is, once we have paid the additional provisionings that's asked for in this agenda item, are we severing our relationship with Robert Half as of December 31st and keeping on in the event that the Consent Agenda item is approved, the key personnel that's listed?
So to answer your first question, it is to the company, Robert Half Talent Solutions. And about the severing of a relationship, so the current plan, Master Service Agreement takes us through to December 31st. However, as we just talked about, the current market conditions, we will explore all opportunities to make sure that we are continuing to support our increasing student population. So any temporary measures that we have to take to make that possible, it may mean continuing, but we go to contractual hiring only if we are not able to get full-time employees. So currently, it's a matter of keeping the business as usual going while we make our efforts to hire full-time employees in the current challenging market conditions. So it may be that we will, we may need to take some measures to hire contractual employees going forward. But that is obviously, we do that after we've exhausted all full-time employee options.
Then I do have a follow-up question. If that is the case, and we may end up with another contract, do we regularly post this RFA or RFP so that we can get bidders for the contract? Or do we default to a particular contractor that we've worked with in the past with the assumption that they won't be working more than the presidential approval contract price, and then just come back to the board every time that it comes over that price?
Yeah, I think it's the latter, that we will seek approval every time we have to get contracted.
Sorry, I'll just interrupt you right now, because Vivek is wonderful and new to us, but he is not our chief financial officer. So I will pinch-hit for Anne, who I think has stepped out for the moment. So a couple of things. One is, when we anticipate larger-scale contract needs that require us to go out for bidding, we absolutely do that. And you've seen that in the cases of things like our marketing services contract, or when we did V Chiefs' contract a year ago or so. And so, you know, I do anticipate that we will likely have some RFP opportunities down the road for technology contracts. And Vivek has been here all of three and a half weeks or so. So he's just getting to the point where he's assessing the needs of the organization on the technology front, assessing for our current staffing solutions, weighing that against both our current level of enrollment and the growth anticipated for the college in the coming years. So I think there's, the hard and fast way we are trying to move things is to expand the opportunity in the pools of contractors available to us, which is best done through our INRFP, largely because it also gives us exposure to a wide range of firms. So, you know, it's this balance, Jolina, of course, between attending to the short-term needs that we just sort of have to meet to be able to handle the front lines of students that we're serving, and also understanding that when we're planning for the long run, there is some contracting in our future that might be more large-scale as we make some big leaps and jumps. And those are things that would go through an RFP process. And we have a very extensive, several, I think, 100 and something-page procurement manual that governs the conditions under which that happens internally, which we monitor very closely. That was something that we created coming out of the audit.
Thank you so much, Ajita.
Thank you, Ajita. As Ajita said, I'm trying to right now assist our needs and see how we can utilize the vehicle available to us to keep business, support business as we also try to hire through these, through the RFP process, as well as whatever is available to us. So it's a, it's a learning process right now.
Yes.
And I thank Ajita for your supporting guidance. Thank you.
Pam, I don't know if you have any comments in Rome, but I do see Board Member Williams has his hand raised. I'm going to go to you first, though, Pam, and then we'll go to Board Member Williams.
All right, thank you. So this kind of begs the question of, we're now in the middle of November. This contract is until the 31st of December, which is about, what, six weeks? And so the question then becomes, and so I'm going to piggyback on what Trustee Grande asked, and that is, given the short timeframe, even though we may be aggressively looking for a hire, is that, will there be a problem if we do not find a hire? Well, we have this hire, and maybe that's, maybe that is the bridge. I'm not, I'm not certain. But come January the 1st, if there is no new hire, we would then, we're not, it appears we're not going to be putting it out for bid. I mean, that's a longer process. So what it says to me is then that we would go back to Robert Hall... dot-dot-dot for another addendum, or another contract, another contract for a period of time.
You're not planning on going to Robert Half.
Okay, all right. So whatever, whatever happens as of January the 1st, we're not, Calbright is not going to be challenged by...
We're not requesting an extension.
Okay, all right, perfect. Answering my question, thank you.
Okay, Board Member Williams.
Good morning, everyone. Just for the purposes of the documents, can we just make sure that the documents get cleaned up? Because the contract says Robert Half International, but I think someone mentioned Robert Half Talent Services. So can we just make sure that the parties are clear in the document for, when we get to our motion?
Yes, I will make sure that happens.
I'm looking around. I don't see any other board comments. So with that, I will open it up to any public comments.
There is no public comments, President Costa.
Thanks. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of this item. It's Member Grande.
I heard Grande and Hall. If I missed someone, apologies. Now, can we call the roll, please?
Hilda Guard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Josh Elizondo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Jolina Grande.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Kevin Hall.
Hi.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis.
Hi.
Paul Medina.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Roy Chavazian.
Yes.
Los Villalobos.
Yes.
And Joseph Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Thank you. With that, colleagues, I have to apologize. I'm a woman of action, and so I went right into the action items versus giving you my report and giving CEO Menon a chance for her report. So I'll get better as I go. Thanks. I'm going to keep my comments very brief, but thank you to each of you who selected me and Hildy to serve as leaders of this board. Really appreciate it. And I think, you know, like so many things in life, we have some changes, some, some new faces with our newest student leader, Board Member Medina, and we have Pam still staying with us, but as a regular board member. And I spoke yesterday, and I won't duplicate myself, about some of the value that I think Pam has brought to our board. And I think a lot of the personal experience that she shared in her president's report yesterday, as well as throughout her tenure, are really relevant for Calbright. I think when Calbright started, it was an idea met with some skepticism and a question about the need. But I think with the current economic headwinds, the need for Calbright has never been clearer. I think coming out of the pandemic, we all learned that online education can indeed happen. And we do have to be mindful about how that's delivered, which means we have to rely heavily on our faculty as well as our student supports. But I did want to just read some statistics, which is, and some of this comes from the Department of Finance, as well as the PPIC. U.S. wage and income distribution are more unequal than it has been in over four decades. Between 1979 and 2019, wages actually declined for the bottom 10% of earners before growing slightly in recent years and likely being eaten up by inflation. This contrasts with wages for the top 10% of workers, which have increased 44%. According to the American Community Survey in 2019, nearly one-third of Californians were working in minimum-wage jobs. Education continues to be tied to poverty rates, and 19.5% of adults ages 25 to 64 without a high school diploma live in poverty. Of course, there's the equity issue. Poverty disproportionately impacts communities of color, with Latinos remaining disproportionately poor, comprising 45.7% of poor Californians, but 39.7 of all Californians. So the work is now. It's more relevant than it's ever been. And I think, you know, what we know is, we're probably already in a recession. I'm totally a cynic. And you don't know you're in a recession until you're in it. But clearly, I think, you know, the signs from the state are that, you know, we could be in for a pretty different economic picture this January. And that means the populations that we serve at Calbright need us more than ever. And with that, I'd love to turn it over to our CEO, CEO Menon, for your report.
Thank you. Good morning, Calbright College Board of Trustees. It's wonderful to be back with some of you in person this morning and others digitally. I'd like to begin by also extending an enthusiastic welcome and congratulations to President Amy Costa and Vice President Hildy Aguinaldo in their first meeting at the helm of our Board of Trustees. And I'd also really like to offer my heartfelt thanks to former President Haynes for her leadership of the Board of Trustees, and as well as the Assistant Board of Governors. Your steadfast dedication to Calbright's mission has been so critical to helping us navigate very exceptionally difficult circumstances as a part of our startup period. And I'm just so personally grateful for your leadership and your guidance over this past year, past couple of years, in fact. And I look forward to continued partnership with you and with President Costa and the board as we build this college from the ground up. Today, we also have a new member joining our board on behalf of Calbright, and I'd like to welcome Trustee Medina. As a student, your voice on the board is so critical, and it's so important across the system because it's so necessary to elevate the lived experiences of our students in the day-to-day of what we do and how we govern. I look forward to working with you to finding new solutions to some of the system's hardest challenges. Thank you so much for joining us. As Amy mentioned, across the state and nation, we see things like indicators of the economy that look like low unemployment, yet the majority of students at Calbright are either unemployed or working part-time. We see employers clamoring to hire in areas like IT support, while many of our students are stringing together multiple jobs, working more than 40 hours a week in order to make ends meet. And at the same time, we're experiencing a rapidly evolving labor market and stand at the precipice of an economic recession. I'm a little less a cynic, which we all know will impact those who can least afford it. Today's meeting and agenda not just reflects this reality, but it actually reflects Calbright's focus to meet this moment. By design, our education and training programs help prepare students to enter a variety of different industries and to work within an ecosystem of positions that span multiple sectors. To help our, support our students in their journey to the knowledge economy and to begin their career with hands-on training, I'm very thrilled to bring to you for approval today a new partnership with Bitwise Industries. Our intention is to begin with a smaller pilot program and focus on areas like the Central Valley in Oakland, and will place 24 students directly into paid Bitwide apprenticeships and IT support and Salesforce administration, which will provide on-the-job training, career mentorship, and portfolio development opportunities. But I just want to point out, the value of this is not just a single pilot, but a partnership that represents an industry leader and higher ed aligning towards a shared goal of to advance economic mobility and expand the pipeline of diverse candidates to enter the technology field. And as we continue to see an acceleration in enrollment and completion numbers for our students, I'm also delighted to welcome back our colleagues from UC Irvine School of Education, Nudge Labs, and Ideas 42 to our meeting for an update on our initiative that's focused on supporting stronger student outcomes. At a basic level, we are exploring how we communicate and engage with students across their journey with the express intent of ensuring that our outreach is designed to be more inclusive, more informative, more welcoming, and that it actually serves as a catalyst to advance persistence, completion, and success. I want to pause here for a moment. Each of these endeavors on its own are very mission-critical and central to Calbright's student body, which now stands at nearly 1,500 students. But they also reflect this college's role as the leading edge of the learning curve for serving adult learners. Since the start of the pandemic, we've previously discussed 300,000 students have disappeared from California's community college system with non-traditional students and those from underserved communities leaving at the highest rates. And this is not unlike what we're seeing nationwide. They're making decisions with their feet, and they're telling us very clearly that institutions need to be designed with student needs in mind and not the other way around. This is not just a vanity preference, as it's sometimes being characteristic, that coming out of the pandemic, students just prefer online and hybrid classes. If we actually examine it a little bit closer, it's more than that. It's actually a confrontation with the moment that we are in, a confrontation with the hard realities that so many are facing in their lives. And so as we move forward with UCI, with Bitwise, with other partners, it's with the recognition that we'll both deliver strong outcomes for our students and develop near-term and long-term sharing opportunities with our sister campuses and other colleges that can benefit from the work taking place at Calbright. Already, early trends are promising. This fall, we launched an outreach campaign focused on connecting with students who have been inactive for nearly a month. In September, 42% of those students re-engaged with their programs. In October, that number grew to 52%. And though we know that labor market outcomes are a lagging indicator, our completion numbers tell us we're on track. This fiscal year, we're on pace to roughly double the amount of certificates of completion awarded compared to last year. And our growing alumni ranks will provide vital information about the student journey after graduation, which will help us continue to refine, to improve, and to design our supports and services around their needs, understanding where they're finding jobs and what skills they might need to help them build on their successes. These endeavors, however, are not just about what Calbright can accomplish, but the larger impact that we can contribute to. They have to be amplified by the power of the community colleges system, by workforce development entities across the state and across the nation. It's not enough for us to retrospectively generate a retelling of our IP five years from now. What we can learn and what we are learning can help students today. It can have an impact on defining best practices for adult learners in the next semester. We'll share these lessons broadly in the form of documented best practices, in written reports, conference presentations, webinars, and direct engagement. We'll share these lessons broadly in the form of documented best practices and written reports, conference presentations, webinars, and direct engagement with our colleagues. And we're approaching these efforts with the urgency and the humility that this moment demands. We're developing and designing our newest programs focused on the end-to-end user experience and with the needs of our students as the foremost product requirement. We are shortening our improvement cycles and continuing to optimize how we operate. And we're expanding with attention to the quality of the work that we're doing, so that we're ready for an enrollment of 2,000 students, 5,000 students, and beyond that. And we remain laser-focused because behind each data point is actually the story of a hard-working Californian, of someone who is taking a risk by returning to school, or a parent who seeks a better life for themselves and their family. I'm personally very thankful to share this wish, mission with the dedicated team at Calbright and the Board of Trustees and look forward to coming back to share more about our progress in the months and years ahead. Thank you so much. And with that, I'd like to turn things back over to President Costa.
Thank you so very much for your report. Appreciate it. The board will now move into closed session. The board will discuss three items in closed session. Item 2.1, Conference with Labor Negotiator. Item 2.2, Public Employment General Counsel. Item 2.3, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, President and Chief Executive Officer. And is there any public comment on the closed session items?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great. We expect we'll return from closed session in about 45 minutes. We'll recon- Perfect. Thank you so much. Welcome, everyone. It was a little longer than 45 minutes, so thank you for your indulgence. There is no report out of closed session. However, I do want to note for the public, I want to go back to item 1.3, the item of the agenda, or the order of the agenda. And look, folks, now we are going to add back item 4.2, which is our item on general counsel. So we will be hearing that today. And I want to make a note of that. Okay, moving on, we're now going to move on to section three of our agenda, or our consent agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for discussion or separate votes? Seeing none, I'm going to ask if there is any public comment on the item.
There is no public comment.
Great, colleagues, I will entertain a motion in a second.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda. This is Member Grande.
Amy Costa.
I have Grande and Haynes. They beat you via Lobos real, just slightly. Can we call the roll?
Phil DeGard, Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Josh Elizondo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Delina Grande.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Kevin Hall.
Hi.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis. Paul Medina.
Here. Sorry, here.
Paul Medina.
Epstein.
Jennifer Perry. Jennifer. Bill Rawlings.
Yes.
Roy Chavazian.
Yes.
Los Villa Lobos.
Yes.
Joseph Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries President Costa.
And just to clarify, my, President Costa was a yes. Thank you. We're moving on to the action items in our agenda. And first up, we have 4.1, which is the designation of our executive committee members. I'll actually present on this one. Our Executive Committee for Calbright is comprised of seven board members of the Board of Trustees. The board last heard this item and designated, are designated on November 6, 2020. Obviously, based on the actions yesterday at the BAW, we are conforming the executive committee with the election of our officers. With that, I'd like to turn it over to see if there's any board comment on the item. Seeing none, I'd like to open it up to public comment if there is any.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thanks, Terry. With that, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'll move approval. This is Member Grande.
Second, Rawlings.
Great, Grande and Rawlings. Let's call the roll.
Phil DeGard, Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Joshua Elizondo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Delina Grande.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Kevin Hall.
Hi.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis.
Hi.
Paul Medina.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Roy Chavazian.
Yes.
Los Villa Lobos.
Yes.
And Joseph Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries President Costa.
Terry, next up on our agenda is the item that we pulled that's now back, and that is item 4.2, General Counsel. With that, we have Mr. Brimgartner providing the presentation.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the board. Today, I would like to recommend Latisha Ramirez as our first-ever General Counsel candidate for you to consider. You have the bio in your board packets, but I just want to highlight a couple of things. She's dedicated her legal career to advising and representing cities and other public agencies as in-house and outside counsel. She joins Calbright with a strong background in advising elected and appointed officials, as well as other executive staff on legal matters, policy development, and strategy. She's coming to us most recently as Deputy County Counsel for Sacramento County. And prior to that, she was the city attorney for a growing city of a population of about 98,000. Before her time as in-house counsel, she worked for a private law firm specializing in advising public entities and has also clerked for a federal magistrate judge in the U.S. District Court. Latisha holds a bachelor's degree, or bachelor's degree in history from Stanford University and has earned her Juris Doctorate from UCLA Law School. I'm very pleased to recommend her candidacy for your consideration today.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Colleagues, any trustee discussion, comments, or questions on this item? Lieutenant Governor.
Thank you so much. I intend to vote in support of this candidate, and I just wanted to say that I think that there are very, there are instances where we see Californians who rise up in our state pursuing the California dream. And I think this candidate really exemplifies that. And that she, among all the different paths that she might have taken in her career, would choose public service, and that she has identified the California Community College System as the best place for her to be able to apply her talents in service, I think is a wonderful thing. And I, for one, certainly look forward to working with her and would be, I think we already have a motion in a second, so let me just say that that I look forward to working with this candidate and for voting for her approval. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. I must say, if she worked for a county, she must be great. With that, any public comments on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
With that, actually, Lieutenant Governor, I will take a motion if you'd like to make it.
Yes, I would be honored to make a motion to approve.
Great, thanks.
Second.
All right, we got Villa Lobos as the second. With that, Terry, can you please call the roll?
Phil DeGard, Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Josh Elizondo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Delina Grande.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Kevin Hall.
Hi.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis.
Hi.
Paul Medina.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Roy Chavazian.
Yes.
Los Villa Lobos.
Hi.
Joseph Williams.
Hi.
Motion carries President Costa.
Thanks, Terry. Welcome to Latitia, to the Calbright family. Happy to have you here. Next up, we have 4.3, the Calbright College Bitwise Apprenticeship Pilot Program Partnership. That's an acronym, you guys. And we're going to have Mr. Younger lead us in the presentation.
Thank you. And good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the board. Today, I'm excited to seek your feedback and approval on our intention to develop an apprenticeship pilot program in partnership with Bitwise Industries. The pilot program will offer 24 Calbright graduates of our IT support and our customer relationship management program. A full journey, 12-month paid apprenticeship program experience. I want to take a moment to thank Calbright's workforce team and other members and team members across Calbright, who work closely with Bitwise's Chief Workforce Officer, Michelle Scored, to solidify the framework for this opportunity. Michelle has actually joined us virtually, and she'll be sharing a few words later in the presentation. So the value of this partnership is significant as it relates to the college's strategic vision, as well as our student success goal of assisting students with obtaining positive labor market outcomes. Additionally, this partnership and its success will contribute to the process of seeking pre-apprenticeship designation for Calbright programs through the California Department of Apprenticeship Standards. As you know, Governor Newsom designated apprenticeships as one of three key job strategies to tackle growing income inequality and prepare Californians for the jobs of today and tomorrow. And he had a lofty goal, a very important goal, of being able to expand the system to accommodate 500,000 apprentices by 2029. So together, Bitwise and Calbright have a shared desire to contribute to these goals as part of this partnership and enhance the workforce development ecosystem, increase economic mobility, and close equity gaps for working adults who lack easy access to higher education. Next slide. Bitwise's mission is to uplift communities in underestimated cities and empower them to learn the skills necessary to enter the technology industry. Many individuals that live in regions that they serve work in low-wage, low-growth jobs. While the hard work ethic and determination are there, the lack of resources, time, and cost are really deterring factors to starting a new career in the tech industry. Bitwise's workforce training department has several federally and state-registered apprentice programs. Bitwise has equipped thousands of students of all ages with real-world technology skills, building on ramps for those traditionally left out of the community. Through their accelerated training programs, thousands of people have been served, with some responsible for developing apps, starting companies, or currently employed in the industry creating technology to address statewide and worldwide challenges. Next slide. As it relates to their impact, in their most recent impact study, Bitwise documented that of the 400 apprentices who completed their survey, more than 97% have been placed into jobs at either Bitwise or another technology firm, or in a technical role at a tech-enabled company. Additionally, 52% are still with their first employer out of the program. 45% are still in tech jobs, but have taken a higher role at a second firm. 88% have advanced into higher roles. And the average third-year earning of graduates who earn tech jobs is approximately $81,000 per year. So the value of this partnership at this very moment is the demonstration of positive outcomes and their alignment as a partner in the regions we care about with an equity focus. Bitwise is at the center of not only workforce development, but also job creation. And as it relates to our pilot program objectives, with a great deal of alignment, as you've heard, in terms of our mission, in terms of our combined missions, we are eager to expose individuals with the skills that will make them successful in high-growth, high-rage, high-wage technology industry. The program pilot objectives are very simple: increasing economic mobility to positively impact the economic well-being of our students, but also their families and communities. Second, closing equity gaps for those who lack easy access to traditional forms of education. And finally, assisting those participants with obtaining meaningful employment while gaining real on-the-job experience. Next slide. Participants will earn approximately $32,000 to $48,000 per year based on location and will be assigned support staff, offered wraparound services, and they will work on real projects under the supervision of a seasoned technical fee. Apart from their day-to-day work, apprentices will have several opportunities to sharpen their skills and give back to the larger technology community by leading workshops, meetings, and co-teaching classes as well. Next slide. Sorry, one slide back. The IT, the IT apprenticeship program will build on the existing student knowledge of Calbright's Information Technology Support Program. Apprentices will learn and gain hands-on experience with advanced IT concepts in line with the next phase of ComTIA Network Plus. They will learn about networking fundamentals, concepts, services, and connections alike. The goal is that 12 Calbright IT support program graduates living in Bitwise cities of Fresno, Merced, and Oakland will be screened into the Information Technology Apprenticeship Program with the expectation that those that complete the program, 80% will successfully complete ComTIA's Network Plus certification exam as well. As it relates to the Salesforce Apprenticeship Program, next slide. The Salesforce Pilot Apprenticeship Program will build upon the existing knowledge gained from Calbright's Customer Relationship Management Program. Apprentices will learn advanced Salesforce curriculum and gain hands-on experiences as a Salesforce administrator with responsibilities focused on maintaining and supporting the Salesforce ecosystem. Again, the expectation would be that 12 Calbright CRM Administrator Program graduates living in Bitwise cities will be screened into this program. Next slide. As it relates to the program funding opportunities, the total cost of this partnership will be approximately $2 million, which covers support and administration costs, apprenticeship leads, apprenticeship employment costs, as well as wraparound services. This remains consistent with the U.S. Department of Commerce's estimates of apprenticeship programs and costs for scale and size of program. Calbright and Bitwise will each contribute 25% of this amount, or $500,000 each, to fund the program. The additional funding will come from joint workforce development funding applications to philanthropy, industry, state, and federal entities. Finally, our next steps. Our next steps are seeking and obtaining your support and approval today, obviously, to move this partnership forward. We will also be finalizing the partnership agreement and begin the hard work of planning for this apprenticeship program. This includes working with our marketing and communications team on the communication strategy, working with Calbright faculty to develop a competitive and equitable screening process for the first cohort of candidates, and of course, working with our partners at Bitwise on the logistics and program launch schedules. So at this time, I would like to introduce Michelle Scored, Chief Workforce Officer at Bitwise Industries, to share a few words about this groundbreaking partnership. Michelle?
Thank you, Michael. It is critical for California to continue to advance its apprenticeship infrastructure and invest in the sustainable workforce that meets the state's present and future needs. For Bitwise, this partnership is key for a few reasons. First, it produces positive outcomes for overlooked populations and clearly defines impact. This, this is how we lift up humans and meet the talent demands of a growing tech sector in California. This collaboration is all about innovation in both higher ed and in industry, and how we can leverage the key competencies in both organizations to maximize the positive impact in the communities we both serve. This partnership could define how we think about training and upskilling humans in the state of California and beyond. At Bitwise, we feel that this is a landmark example of how to partner effectively. In short, we're extremely excited about the potential of this partnership and look forward to its success. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Michelle. And at this time, I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. With that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. Any discussion or questions for the presenters?
I just want to know, sorry, let me record.
We have trustee Medina who wants to be- We have trustee Medina who wants to be recognized. Great, okay. Yeah, absolutely.
From doing my research, I want to know that I'm really excited about this partnership between Bitwise and Calbright College, which potentially even in the future lead to more opportunities of employment. And it's a start, it's a pilot program. I'm so excited about it. Looking forward to the first cohort. Actually, you're going to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board comments or questions or discussion? Okay, with that, let's see if there's any public comments.
There is no public comment.
Thanks. With that, I will entertain a motion and a second, board members.
With approval, Haynes.
Second, Rollins.
Second, Williams.
I think Rollins beat you, Williams. With that, Terry, can you please call the roll?
Heldegard Aguinaldo.
Rollins beats me all the time, but I...
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Josh Elizondo.
I'm.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Jolina Grande.
Hi.
Cam Haynes.
Hi.
Kevin Hall.
Hi.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis.
Hi.
Paul Medina.
Hi.
Bill Rollings.
Hi.
Roy Shabazian.
Yes.
Los Villa Lobos.
Hi.
And Joseph Williams.
Yes.
I think we need Board Member Perry called for roll as well, please, Terry.
I believe she's no longer here, but Jennifer Perry.
She's waving at me.
Oh, she is, okay. Jennifer Perry. Sorry, Jennifer.
Yes, and I think that Vice President Aguinaldo should remind Member Rollins that she outranks him now.
She does. Just trying to keep things moving for President Costa.
Motion carries President Costa.
Thanks, Terry, so much. Next up, we have Carmen Drummond presenting on item 4.4, Signatory Authority for the CFO.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and Board of Trustees. I present a request for authorization of Calbright's Chief Financial Officer, Angelito Tolentino, to be a signatory on the Solano County Treasury. As you may recall, back in April of 2019, the Executive Committee adopted Resolution 2019-5 to establish Calbright's accounts in the Solano County Treasury. Per Education Code Sections 85232 and 85233, Calbright is responsible for filing the verified signature of each person authorized to sign orders against the accounts in Calbright's name. On February 16, 2022, the Board authorized interim Chief Financial Akorvar Darajan to act as a signatory on Calbright's accounts in the Solano County Treasury. Currently, President and CEO, a chief man, and interim CFO, Akorvar Darajan, are the only signatories on behalf of Calbright. Angelito Tolentino is now Calbright CFO. We are excited. This is his first Board of Trustees meeting, and he needs to be authorized as a signatory on Calbright's accounts in the Solano County Treasury. Today, I request your approval to authorize CFO, Angelito Tolentino, as a signatory on Calbright's accounts in the Solano County Treasury.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Colleagues, any trustee discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'll see if there's any public comment on this item.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thank you, colleagues. I'll entertain a motion and a second. Aguinaldo. Oh, Aguinaldo beat Rollins this time. With a motion, Rollins with a second. With that, Terry, can you please call the roll?
Heldegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Josh Elizondo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Jolina Grande.
Hi.
Cam Haynes.
Hi.
Kevin Hall.
Hi.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis.
Hi.
Paul Medina.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
Bill Rollings.
Hi.
Roy Shabazian.
Yes.
Los Villa Lobos.
Hi.
Joseph Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries President Costa.
Great, thank you. We're now moving on to Section 5, Information and Reports. We'll start with item 5.1, presented by Marissa Bold, and this is an update on the Calbright College University of California-Irvine Partnership.
Terrific. Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the board. We can go to the next slide. Thanks, Terry. We are here today to share an update on the work in progress with the exciting Calbright UC Irvine, or UCI, as you'll hear us saying, alternatively, the partnership together that the Board approved late last year. This is a five-year partnership deeply aligned to Calbright's mission and strategic vision, and this puts Calbright at the forefront of innovating and advancing effective instructional and advising practices. Together, we're applying innovative data and behavioral science strategies to inform new and responsive approaches to how we support our focus population of working learners, designed with their needs at the center, as President Menon talked about at the beginning of this call, and serve them especially well. This work is also designed to expand Calbright's internal data analytics and behavioral expertise and to generate and share rigorous evidence of effective approaches to improve educational and career outcomes for working adults. Terry, next slide, please. The Calbright and UCI teams have been working closely together since we visited with the Board at the end of last year. We have strong and ongoing support from both the new Dean of the UCI School of Education, Dean Francis Contreras, who Gita Brendan and I met with earlier this year, as well as the continued leadership of the prior dean, Richard Arum, Professor of Sociology and Education, who is continuing to lead the work in a co-principal investigator role and is here with us again today. We have a scope of work in place for the first two years of the five-year partnership, which allows us to make strong progress together, maintain momentum, as well as reflect and adapt along the way. And internally, we are also so appreciative of our Calbright working group and team members across the college who are engaging deeply in the partnership. We're already seeing the relevance of the work across teams and, in particular, around strategies to promote students' success and expand Calbright's internal expertise in serving our students. We are excited to be joined today by four leaders and partners in this work, who will get to spend some time with today. We're excited for you to get to know them, ask any early questions, and we promise to come back with more updates and opportunities for engagement along the journey of this partnership. With that, we can go, Terry, to the next slide, and I will hand it over to Di Zhu, one of our lead principal investigators, who's here with us from UC Irvine.
Thank you, Marissa, for providing a very thorough introduction for the context of this partnership. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having us today. My name is Di Zhu, and I'm on the faculty at UC Irvine. It is a great pleasure for my colleagues and I to provide you with an update about the partnership activities we have been engaged in. But please allow me to share upfront how excited we have been about a close collaboration with the Calbright teams to identify strategies to support adult learners under a competence-based model. We would also like to take a moment to express our great gratitude to all of the Calbright teams who have been working with us closely since the beginning of the partnership. As Marissa has pointed out, a primary goal of this partnership is capacity building. Therefore, we will engage early on with clear benefits to Calbright and Calbright teams and focus our efforts on practice and implementation. We intend this to be a proactive collaboration between various teams at Calbright and experts in data and measurement, online learning design, and innovative behavioral science to support Calbright's efforts to improve competencies in becoming the leading edge of CBE model and online learning. We've structured this partnership around three interrelated strands of work: one focused on student success measurement, one on learning design engagement, and one on behavioral science design intervention. Dr. Richard Arum from UC Irvine will be leading the student success measurement strand, which will develop and implement a state-of-the-art measurement system to track student experiences, trajectories, and outcomes. I myself will be leading the learning design and engagement strand, which will identify factors and instructional design or practices that facilitate learning, enhance interactions, and improve performance under a competence-based model. Dr. Ben Castleman from University of Virginia and a team of designers from the nonprofit Behavioral Design Lab Ideas 42, led by Tom Tash, will be running the behavioral science design intervention strand, which will leverage research into effective nudge tactics and promising new behavioral economics and data science insights to build a framework for rapid-cycle innovation throughout the Calbright model. This structure will allow experts in each of these fields to work close functionally with the Calbright team to identify and realize opportunities to improve institutional effectiveness and student engagement in a comprehensive way, from pre-enrollment to post-completion. Next slide, please. The three-strand structure will allow us to move meaningfully and efficiently with specialized teams focusing on strengthening different parts of Calbright through distinct sets of activities, which we will share more details on shortly. At the same time, coordination across strands remains a core feature of this partnership. In addition to routine coordination and resource sharing across strands to optimize efficiency, we are also planning to have several focused moments of proactive collaboration. One of the main opportunities for this will be a series of collaborative design sprints that intend to quickly establish a framework to rapidly develop ideas and attest to how they are working in an iterative way. Specifically, we will pair experts from the UCI Ideas 42 Partnership with the small teams representing different Calbright functions to collaboratively design ways to address pain points in a student experience and improve student outcomes through a structured innovation process. We are currently planning to run four of these sprints over the next several months, each lasting about 10 weeks total, working with the student support functions, the data team, and the faculty. Next slide, please. So with that, I will pass over to my colleague, Dr. Richard Arum, to provide an overview of the student success measurement strand.
Thanks, Dr. Xu. Next slide, please. So we've been working at UCI for the last four years in designing a state-of-the-art measurement system at UCI, integrating survey data, administrative data, data from the learning management systems to better understand student experiences, trajectories, and outcomes. And we've been using that system to identify and eliminate barriers and obstacles to student success. That is, we've been using that measurement system to address and improve retention and graduation at UCI. We want to do that sort of practical work with measurement at Calbright. And we're starting by designing in partnership with Calbright a survey portfolio that would include surveying students at five different points in time: one, when they begin the program; second, at the end of every course they complete; third, midway through the program; fourth, at the end of the program; and then fifth, out in the labor market. Calbright already, of course, has been using surveys, but we've been able to take those surveys, redesign them in partnership with them, and devise techniques to improve response rates to get better data. And this data, again, will be integrated with the administrative data and data from the learning management courseware platforms to better understand student experiences, trajectories, and outcomes. This work, again, is done not just in partnership with Calbright, but is designed to improve the internal capacity of Calbright to do this work moving forward. So the data from this work, as well as the actual instruments, will belong to Calbright so that the work can proceed long after we've designed and developed the instruments. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Richard. For the learning design engagement strand, we have launched the two key activities. Next slide, please. The first one is to map the current learning design at Calbright to online teaching and learning theories to identify potential places for further improvement. We started with a list of key challenges the online teaching and learning theories and empirical literature has identified for adult learners in a virtual learning setting. Here on the top of the panel, I listed a few such challenges, which is by no means an exhaustive list, but highlight a few key challenges the current literature agrees on. Explicitly identifying the challenges associated with online learning broadly and a CBE model more specifically leads to several categories of learning design and advising practices that are promising at addressing these challenges and thus improving student engagement and performance outcomes. This list will guide our efforts to identify potential places that can be further improved, as well as guiding the design of subsequent interventions targeting learning design and student engagement. It is worth noting here that under the competence-based model, advising practice is a fairly broad category that includes joint efforts from advisors, counselors, and student supports. Therefore, we will engage with multiple teams at Calbright when designing and implementing interventions under this strand. Next slide, please. One note about the first activity is that many of the promising practices nominated in the current online teaching and learning literature were not developed specifically to the context of competence-based model. Therefore, to further complement our list of intervention strategies that are particularly suited to the competence-based learning context, the second activity we have been working on is to develop a protocol for subsequent interviews with administrators at a CBE lead institutions. Through these interviews, we intend to collect information on specific instructional and advising practices that have been tailored to the CBE context and are promising improving student engagement and performance. Some examples include specific ways to facilitate peer interactions in an asynchronous self-paced setting or pre-course assessment practices to develop a personalized learning plan for individual students that are fairly unique to the competence-based model. Next slide, please. Our last strand is behavioral design intervention, and I will pass over to Dr. Ben Castleman to provide an overview of this strand.
Thank you very much, Dee. In our work with many post-secondary systems and institutions over the years, we've identified three main areas where nudges and other behaviorally informed interventions can be particularly effective. First, to help learners overcome obstacles that might stand in the way of their intention to enroll and earn a credential. Second, to help learners connect with supportive services and resources that position them for success. And finally, we have found that nudges are most effective when we design and implement them in close partnership with, rather than for, our partners. We believe nudges can be particularly powerful for working adult learners like Calbright serves, given how much they're often juggling between schoolwork and family. We're running a few different activities with Calbright over these first two years of the partnership, and we wanted to spotlight two of them here for you today. The first is what we call a behavioral communications review. This is an exercise where we take a close look at a range of student-facing communications shared with us by different Calbright teams. Thank you for advancing this slide. The goal of this review is to identify opportunities for evidence-based enhancements to content and practices that can lead to increased student engagement. And because Calbright students' engagement is primarily digital, we believe these communications enhancements can be particularly impactful because they're so closely intertwined with how learners engage with instructional and non-instructional staff, and of course, with their peers as well. Next slide, please. In addition to the behavioral communications review, we also want to spotlight the first of the behavioral design sprints that we mentioned earlier. The goal of these sprints is to generate, in close partnership with members of the Calbright community, a range of innovations for the Calbright model that can improve a range of innovations for the Calbright model that can improve key student outcomes. The sprints are really going to be our entry point for deeper design work that we'll carry out over the next two years, positioning us to rapidly develop ideas and test how they're working with the goal of integrating behavioral insights as close to the core of the Calbright model as possible so that learners can seamlessly advance through their programs of study. And with that, I'll turn it back to Dee.
Uh, next slide, please. Thank you, Ben. Uh, so for the last part of our presentation, we would like to preview a roadmap of upcoming activities from each of the three strands. Next slide, please. Um, so for the sake of time, each strand picked up three key activities over the next twelve months, which we summarize here in bullet points. It includes a continuation of the activities we have already launched um, and presented today, as well as some new and exciting activities we have been planning. We would like to make sure that we have time to take questions from you or hear feedback from you. So with that, uh, we'd love to, um, open it up to discussions and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. We appreciate it. Um, I see, uh, Board Member Hall has his hand raised.
So I think we're limited on time, so I'm not going to barrage with a lot of questions. And frankly, I mean, this is really, this is fascinating, this whole thing. And I think, I like to make a recommendation that we reconvene with the same group to find out more about it because, I mean, I- obviously, what you're doing is cutting edge. And, um, but there- there's a lot of issues to discuss. There's just, in general, the- the last gentleman who's speaking on behavioral design and intervention, we- you said you've done a lot of post-secondary work. Is that with actual grad students who've completed college and gone into grad program? And I'm asking that because are- are you dealing with a different type of student who might be more familiar with online learning or have a more advanced, um, um, relationship with education than- than what a typical Calbright student might have? And- and- and is that apples to apples or apples to oranges?
It's a fantastic question. I know we're short on time, so I'll answer briefly. Uh, the vast majority of our work has been in the community college context, uh, with current undergraduates. Um, and, uh, students enrolled in both credit, uh, i- i- primarily credit-bearing programs, but sometimes certificate programs as well as, uh, associate degrees. And so in that sense, I think the student body of working adult learners um, is broadly consistent with Calbright College. I would also observe, to your point about apples and orange, uh, probably one of the top, uh, guiding principles of applying behavioral insights is that, uh, these strategies are most effective when they are designed for the specific context. There is not a single cookie cutter approach. And so while our work, um, has- has been with a similar population, uh, we are very committed and very cognizant that the best work will be done in close partnership with members of the Calbright College community, um, so that we are designing strategies that are really attuned to the Calbright context and population.
Great. Please. It does. Just quick follow-up question in present cost. I- I- I'm not going to take a bunch of time, but h- how much time do you spend with each student? You know, try on these, um, interviews or communicating with the students to try to gather your data? And is it done orally over the telephone or Zoom call? Or is it all done digitally?
Uh, I- I, to, for the, if it's pertaining to the survey information, I'll, I will defer that part of the question to, to Professor Arum. On the nudges and behavioral insights work, it really depends on the design. Sometimes it's a very light-touch engagement, uh, as simple as an interactive set of text messages where the student can read the information and respond if they choose. Sometimes it's a more intensive advising session, working with advisors at a great institution like Calbright. Um, and, and one thing to emphasize, I think, about the partnership overall, certainly the behavioral, uh, design strand, is that the focus is much more on action and with the, with the focus of improving student outcomes and evaluating rigorously the efficacy of that action more than it is on academic research. So we really bring an action orientation with a shared goal with our Calbright partners, um, to, to improve Calbright student outcomes as best we can. Uh, Professor Arum, if you want to add anything on the survey collection question, of course, please feel free to do so.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, uh, the best way to talk about it would be kind of a mixed methods approach. So, uh, interviews and focus groups with students to understand, uh, their experiences in their own words. Uh, but then also to use that information to design these survey instruments so that you can collect, uh, this information at scale from, from all the students moving through the Calbright program.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other, uh, board, uh, discussion or comments? I certainly think Board Member Hall's request, um, that as this, uh, partnership continues, you come back to the board, um, and provide us an update kind of as, as you progress is certainly warranted. Um, with that, I'm going to see if there's any comments from members of the public. Oh, President, um, President.
Oh, goodness, thank you. So my question really goes to, um, the scaling of the work. And, um, because I know there's going to be a lot of lessons learned. How will one do that? I- I, and I'm, I'm, you know, Calbright is a small footprint, and so it's really, it's absolutely fabulous. But we're planning to grow, and then there may be other colleges that are, are doing some of this work on our, our college campuses. Um, the, how long will it take, take to scale, I guess?
What you've learned.
I'm happy to take a crack at it, and if, um, uh, if Ben or others want to speak to it from the perspective of experience they've had working with other institutions, they're welcome to. Um, but I'd say what is so wonderful about this approach to the work, which is very tactical, is that inherently it is, it is, it conditions scale rather than it is a before and after effect. So basically, you are, you know, folks, the, the purpose of these things are also to get us to be able to do these things ourselves internally. Right? So introducing the tools and methodologies and approaches and processes, all of those things are embedded parts of then how we conduct our work. Um, so it is a very, it is a very sort of structural element to the kind of change. And so when we use that word capacity building, which can mean a lot of things, what we literally mean is, um, you know, getting all of our systems processes, pers- you know, folks trained and, and, and participating in these activities so that they carry them forward in perpetuity. And, um, that these tools can be applied in, in essentially any type of context, uh, or interaction that you're having with a student over time. So it also is kind of, um, self-fulfilling in that way, where, um, now when I sit down to write a communication, I'm going to be first thinking about the considerations of how to make that communication most engaging for the student based on what I've internalized and understood through this very practice-based approach. So it, it actually embeds the change and, um, in the process of achieving the results. Um, and so these are, you know, uh, you know, again, I am not, uh, somebody else should speak to the instruments, but the, um, these are the types of things that, um, is very much a, you know, teaching person to fish kind of approach to, to things. And, um, when you embed it in one part of an organization, often it can permeate through a lot of the practices that they will, uh, that they will take on, not just isolated in a particular division like student supports or something, or, or learning, um, but across all of the ways in which we connect and communicate and build relationships with the folks that are coming into our institution.
But that's within an integrated system. The, the, the system design facilitates that.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I, I can't see the little dots in the room, but I'm assuming there's no more board comments in the room. Uh, let's move on to public comments and see if there's any public comment.
President Costa, we do have one public comment. The Reese hand.
Great. Yes, I see Jessica Howard with her hand raised.
So Jessica.
I apologize. I believe my system wasn't working.
We can hear you if you'd like to go ahead and provide your comment.
Yes, I apologize. I believe my system wasn't working. If you can hear me.
We can hear you. Fine, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, my system wasn't working and raised my hand.
Oh, you didn't want to make a comment. Okay.
Yeah, no, I apologize. It was just.
No worries. Thank you, Jessica. Okay. Well, thank you so much for the presentation. Hopefully, we will hear from this group again as this, as this partnership continues. Um, I agree with Board Member Hall and Haynes, like, very fascinating. Um, so thank you very much. Uh, we're going to move on to our next item, which is, um, item five point two, presented by Mr. Younger on Labor Market Insights 3D Animation and Design and Junior Developer.
Good morning again, uh, President Costa, Vice President Algonado, and members of board. I'm excited to be before you again today to preview our labor market insights, supporting our intention to develop, uh, two new, um, programs here at Calbright, 3D Animation and Graphic Design Program, an exciting new occupational cluster for Calbright and, uh, Junior Developer Program, an expansion of our existing computer technologies occupational cluster. So you'll recall during the March twenty twenty-two Board of Trustees Study Session, Calbright introduced a workforce-driven, equity-centered community design framework for program research, selection, and development. In alignment with that strategy and prior to moving forward with program development and pilot launch, we committed to providing the board with a preview of our research and findings to support new program selection. Therefore, uh, today we'll review Calbright's research and development phase, which consists of a comprehensive labor market information deep dive, including a quantitative career scan and qualitative, uh, interviews. Just in the interest of time, we'll advance a few slides here, uh, to the Equity Center Community Design Slide on Slide Five. Perfect. Um, for illustrative purposes, so we brought back, if you may, your slide, uh, to each of you, which is really Brenda's filtering action to highlight our filtering process through the lens of our type of learner, Brenda, uh, who doesn't view higher education in a traditional way. Uh, her set of circumstances is a single parent of two children, a caregiver with both, uh, her mother and her sister living with her, uh, while managing two low-paying jobs. Uh, doesn't allow her to freedom and flexibility to view higher education in a traditional way. Therefore, instead of the traditional industry or sector-based approach to program development, where programs are extremely specialized in a technical skills, uh, with limited transferability across different industries, we have chosen as a college to specialize in moving over like communities directly into the entry-level rungs of the economy, uh, where skills are infinitely transferable across industries. Thinking through the various toggles on this screen, uh, we filter a hundred percent through the eyes of our dot learner. Uh, this is what co-creation of a college experience truly means. Their needs, their desires, and their preferences. Again, this is a core tenet of equity-centered community design. Leveraging the state's employment development department labor market information, uh, projections database, we filter out the following: jobs with credential and formal education requirement, jobs with median pay below thirty-two thousand and offering no on-the-job or career development opportunities, and jobs that are mainly managerial. This type of filtering through the lens of our dot learner informs not only our program selection strategy, but it also allows us to categorize our current and future programs into occupational clusters that meet student needs. Next slide. Here you'll see.
Next slide. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, here you'll see our current categorization or occupational cluster types in computer technologies, design innovation, knowledge economy, as well as healthcare. Today, we'll focus on the two occupational clusters to your left, uh, where our future 3D animation and graphic design, as well as our junior, uh, developer programs will reside. Excellent. I'd like to spend a moment sharing market data and insights for this entirely new occupational cluster design innovation, which will be home to our 3D animation and graphic design program. We are also grateful to be joined, uh, virtually by Allison Frenzel, Program Specialist, uh, from the California Department of Education and Nicole Hendricks, Executive Director and Co-Founder of the BRIC Foundation, two organizations that have provided thought leadership during our development efforts and have also, uh, been so impactful in creating equitable career pathways for future generation of diverse creators in the arts, media, and entertainment industry. They will share a few words later in the presentation. Next slide. 3D animation and graphic design field, uh, and the broader industry has experienced pressures caused by COVID-nineteen pandemic and the Great Recession. These impacts, uh, have also been revealing as it relates, uh, to diversity, hiring practices, access, and opportunity. In fact, uh, women only represent approximately thirty-two percent of the workforce with career progression stalling for women as they move up the ladder, with fewer and fewer represented as head of story, head of animation, and a staggering three percent representing in director roles. These numbers are even worse for women of color, uh, where they only represent a mere fraction of those roles women occupy. As a result, there is a push to transform the industry by leveraging more equitable talent management strategies to both attract, uh, and retain a diverse and creative talent pool. This transformation, uh, is timely, uh, given the latest projections that indicate that 3D animation and graphic design field in California will grow ten to sixteen percent by twenty-twenty-eight, with nearly two-hundred-and-seven-thousand jobs added during that time. Next slide. So this map really highlights the regions in, in California and the number of job openings within that region. The darker shade of blue indicates higher valence, uh, of jobs. And while it is important to understand where these jobs are located, uh, we know that opportunity does not have to be where the jobs are located, but where there are large populations of adults, uh, who want to be trained, but, uh, do not have access to the right training opportunities. Next slide. As it relates to employment opportunity, uh, there are greater than ninety thousand jobs on for 3D animation and graphic design in California, with median salary ranges between sixty-six and seventy-six thousand dollars. However, uh, the state is only producing forty-three hundred certificates, uh, in these occupations annually. That's nearly a twenty-to-one job posting to certificate ratio across the state and a thirty-five-to-one ratio in focus regions. Next slide. As you can see, uh, there are common skills across multiple entry-level occupations with career pathways, skills like 3D modeling and research and communication, uh, are highly transferable and lead to a number of top occupations, uh, like 3D character artists or digital interface or graphic designer. Next slide. I'd like to pause, uh, here for a moment to give our thought partners, uh, from the California Department of Education and the BRIC Foundation an opportunity to introduce themselves and offer some brief remarks, starting with, uh, Allison.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having me. Um, and thanks, Michael. I appreciate all this, this research and, and effort, right, has put into this program. So I'll introduce myself. Um, I work as an education programs consultant for the California Department of Education, supporting arts, media, and entertainment career technical education programs in the state. And, um, we've been working with a pretty exciting consortium of employers to establish a viable school-to-career pipeline through a network of registered apprenticeship programs. So the passage of the California Creative Workforce Act of twenty-twenty-one, SB six twenty-eight, established creative arts workforce development as a state priority, and that propelled our work forward. So over the course of the last year, the CDE Arts Media and Entertainment Industry Advisory Board established the AME Workforce Training Initiative. And the California Department of Education has invested approximately nine-hundred-thousand dollars into pilot sites across California. This is, in fact, a high-road training partnership as we are working with our union partners as well as employers to try and solve some of the issues Michael presented so eloquently. So, um, the other thing to mention about this is since the entertainment industry is largely a virtual workforce, we're not bound to some of the regional restrictions like other industries are. So the AME Workforce Training Initiative supports high-quality training programs in K-12 and adult education, career technical education settings, and Calbright is the perfect vehicle for expanding this equity and access statewide. The initiative will bridge public education with workforce intermediaries and a consortium of hiring entities to actualize the development of a new and innovative ecosystem for competency-based registered apprenticeship programs across creative industries. The AME High Road Training Partnership has brought together education partners, employer partners, labor partners, community-based organizations to establish this network, and we're so excited that Calbright wants to join the, um, join the journey as, as we move forward. So, um, the DAS Office has the Division of Apprenticeship Standards. Their Innovative Apprenticeship Office has partnered with CDE to make this possible, and we feel like this, the, the, the model of Cal the 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 model of Calbright is perfect for launching these programs. We don't currently have one community college partner that can serve the state. And since this is a statewide initiative, we felt that Calbright being competency-based and all of these apprenticeships being competency-based was a very ideal um environment to to launch in the adult education space. So um, we're really excited about it, and I don't know if anyone has questions, but I'm happy to answer them as we move along. So I'll I'll pass it back to Michael.
Thank you, Allison, and then I'll ask Nicole if you'd like to share any comments.
Yeah, hi, I'm Nicole. Um, I'm an entertainment professional. Um, so I'm a producer, worked in broadcasting, gaming and live action. I specialize in marketing, so it enables me to domains and prior to brick starting, um, I was always the only girl. And so it was one of those things where my partner, um, she's a creative recruiter in animation and gaming for twenty years and very similar thing to people of color, where it's there is just a broken pathway into the industry. And so we've really spent the last five years um working with our industry partners who do want to solve these issues. We have great retention across animation industry studios. We have a lot of gaming studios committed to this work. Um, and so we spent the last two years um building this apprenticeship program that it's launching this week, actually, on the application. Um, and so it's uh been a long road, but what's really cool about this program is it was designed by industry. We brought together everybody that like, what is that entry-level human that you want to hire? What are the roles you want to hire? What are the competencies? And then we worked with Allison and public education. So a lot of our pilot schools, like ninth graders, middle schoolers, tenth graders are now receiving as of this year, that education that industry wants them to have in terms of what software competencies, what type of project, what should a portfolio look like? Um, and that's the program.
I wanted to also just piggyback and mention that the model that we have put together is a consortium-based model for employers. So instead of it just being a one-to-one ratio with educator or related and supplemental instruction provider and a single employer entity, um, we have about fourteen employers at the table, including Riot Games, Epic Games, um, Nicole will rattle them off way better than I will. But those are just two of our large gaming companies, to name a few, a couple. Um, so.
Illumination Entertainment, owners makers of the minions. Um, we have um DreamWorks and Viacom are very close coming in um this summer. Um, and then we have a plethora of um smaller animation and concept art studios. Um, and so we've actually created a method of sharing. So a lot of these smaller studios are very committed to this work, but they can't commit to six months and a day, but they have a studio that I do characters, I do environments, let's share an apprentice. Um, and so just kind of facilitating those relationships as well.
Incredible, and I I hope you all are enthused as I am about to hearing from key experts that have been so instrumental uh in this industry. So I do want to thank Allison and Nicole uh for your thoughtful remarks uh and the commitment uh and the positive impact each of your organizations are truly having uh in this space. And so uh just moving uh on uh to this uh next portion uh of the presentation before we uh pause for questions, uh, it's the introduction of the junior developer program. Next slide. And so this exciting program will expand the offerings uh in computer technologies, occupational cluster, and introduce junior developer program. And this entry-level career, uh, junior developers assist development teams with analyzing technical requirements, uh, writing and maintaining basic code for computer applications and fixing bugs and error messages while collecting user feedback. Slide fourteen, market data and insights. The demand for developers has increased largely uh due to business digitization trends and the need for quality developers across industries to fulfill business transformation needs. The software and web development field is projected to grow in job volume, but also salary. In fact, long-term projections indicate that this field will grow twenty-five to thirty-six percent by twenty thirty uh with as many as four hundred and twenty-one thousand jobs added during that time. Next slide. As it relates to the regional outlook for junior developers, with somewhat similar uh to the slide we saw before on the regional outlook, uh, the darker shade of blue indicates higher volumes uh in a particular uh region. Next slide. The employment opportunity, uh, as it relates to employment opportunity, there are greater than three hundred and eighty thousand jobs for junior developers in California with median salary ranges between sixty-five and seventy-nine thousand. However, the state is only producing thirteen thousand and four hundred certificates in these occupations annually. That is nearly a twenty-one or excuse me, twenty-eight-to-one job posting to certificate ratio uh within across the state and a forty-one uh to one ratio in focus regions. Next slide. As you can see, uh, there are common skills across multiple entry-level occupations with career pathways within many industries. Programming language and communication skills in industries like information services or finance and insurance can lead to careers as a junior developer or software associate. Next slide. It is no secret uh that IT industry uh as a whole has a great deal of opportunity to diversify uh and offer equitable access and opportunities to a larger demographic. This is an opportunity uh to ensure these individuals uh have an entry-level path uh into software and web development careers and roles as a gateway. The entry-level junior developer program will assist with ensuring greater representation for underrepresented uh groups uh across the board. So with that, I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Younger. Um, board members, we are five minutes out from the ending of this meeting, so I'm going to ask you to be judicious when I ask for discussion. Um, and I do want to thank the presenters um for really a very uh fascinating uh presentation on this industry and this job. Board members, any discussion?
The one, the one over here.
Oh, man, Pam, you're gonna make me go off track. Look at that.
I'm so sorry, but I do have to ask this question, and it, I I want to put it out there, and then you can come back with an answer. So it's not like we don't have populations that would benefit from this. We we across the state, we have folks who are sitting in their bedrooms and their living rooms gaming and and have it and have an aptitude for it. So the question really becomes, these are hard-to-reach populations. And and part of this is the lack of trust in the outreach. So um, as you, uh, you don't have to answer, you can give me a a quick answer, but as you design this, I I it'd be helpful to know what that will look like here in California with with populations. As you said, one point seven are Af- African-descended. I got one. He's sitting in his bedroom and he's gaming seven hours a day. So, but to draw him out will take a a a strategy, to draw his friends out will take a strategy. So I I'm hoping for an answer relative to that.
Absolutely. We're we're happy to come back with with more expansive. I'd say uh suffice it to say that's really our desire is to connect with community-based organizations who are within uh these communities are trusted advocates uh and that have a really good rapport uh with these individuals. And so we want to bring and bear, bring all those resources to life to ensure that we're developing the ecosystem of participants and so, but happy uh to to come back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment, President Costa.
Thanks for the presentation. I'm going to take a little bit of a presidential prerogative here, and I'm going to present on item five point three. Board members, as you know, this is a standing item that we hear every month, um, which is the reports on contracts and purchases. This has to do with contracts that are within the designated um fiscal authority of the CEO. Um, if there are any questions, I might ask Carmen to to answer them, but do trustees have any questions on the contracts and purchases um that are being reported in item five point three? I have a question from uh Board Member Grande. Carmen, I hope you're there.
Wondering if maybe in the future it should be moved to the consent agenda?
You know what? Let me check with our counsel on that, Board Member Grande, to see if that's a a possibility. I I'm not sure of the rules on that, but happy to investigate that.
It's not an action item.
No, it's a report.
That's correct.
Don't have to. Oh, you're on mute.
Amy on mute.
Any public comments?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thank you. Seeing that, we're going to go on to our constituency group reports. Um, and we have one constituency group report, um, item six point two. Um, the Calbright Faculty Association Report, um, and we have Denise Timal. Hopefully, I'm pronouncing that properly. Please correct me if I'm not.
Timal, thank you. Thank you in advance, everyone, for staying for my report. Um, good morning um or afternoon, President Costa, Vice President Agnaldo, President Menon and esteemed members of the board. My name is Denise Timal, Calbright Faculty Association President, but I'm not only the president of CFA. I am also one of the most senior full-time faculty counselors at Calbright, instrumental in the development and launch of career coaching, career workshops as a sole counselor assigned to career services at the time and continue to work in the development of the counseling program with a focus on equity. I launched Calbright's first faculty-led workshop in October on the neuroscience and goal setting specifically tailored to our adult learners based on their expressed needs. I've innovated to include nervous system regulation exercise and counseling me exercises and counseling meetings, group counseling and workshops, which help address the impact of the collective trauma that we see that we and our students have experienced. And I've supported the college to adopt the framework of cultural humility in our daily work and much more. And I'm only one out of the nine full-time community college faculty contributing to the building of Calbright and engaging with our Calbright students each and every day. Today, I'd like to highlight a few of the values of the Calbright Faculty Association. As our, as an association, we deeply believe that our students deserve the best. In light of this, we believe that Calbright pathways thoughtfully designed beyond a minimum viable product in terms of content technology with the appropriate full-time faculty support at the time of lunch and throughout would dramatically increase the student success, uh, student success and completion. In terms of equity, moving beyond a minimum viable product would better support the retention and completion of students who have historically faced institutional barriers and marginalization, the focus population we seek to serve. The barriers at Calbright might look like barriers in the onboarding process that don't allow students to access curriculum appropriately and take days, sometimes weeks, to address due to our limited IT staffing. One part-time faculty hired to teach a program that requires additional support, which might even lead to non-faculty providing that instruction to our Calbright students. Because we believe that our students deserve the best, our faculty advocate ceaselessly for program and institutional improvements to address these and other issues. As an association, we value innovation for improved student learning and outcomes. Our innovation, innovative instructional faculty are in the process of launching the labs, labs in the IT support and cybersecurity curriculum, which allow our students to use virtual machines to develop their skills in these areas, providing the hands-on opportunities that our students so desperately need when building these technical skills in a fully virtual environment. Previously, some of our students pay out of pocket to supplement their education with these virtual machines. The same faculty, along with our workforce faculty, are in the process of rolling out the curric- a curriculum that provides credit for prior learning to better align with our competency-based model of education and ensure that changes or updates to the curriculum allow for students to maintain the momentum they've gained. In addition to meeting with students, engaging in consistent outreach and leading holistic success support groups, our innovative counseling faculty are rolling out workshops for the entire student body, the first of which focuses on neuroscience and goal setting. The workshop addresses the feelings of overwhelm noted time and again by our students and encourages a shift from goals to manageable daily habits, a frame much better suited to our adult learners with multiple roles. One student said, I love the workshop. I appreciated my counselor reaching out when they need, when they knew I needed it. Sometimes I can feel a bit discouraged and overwhelmed. This workshop helped me to reevaluate my course of action. Our counseling faculty are also reaching out to students using action-oriented messaging and text for engagement. For this particular outreach campaign in October, fifty-two percent of the students who had not logged in and worked on an academic activity in twenty-one to twenty-one days logged in and worked on an activity within two weeks of their counselor reaching out. As an association, we value the role, our role as faculty at Calbright and supportive working conditions that help promote student success. We chose to become faculty because we understand that if supported and provided the professional respect and autonomy needed to carry out our roles beyond expectation, our impact on students can be transformational for them and for generations to come. We value our role in serving students and our role as subject matter experts. This role necessitates that our institution provide the support to carry out our main duties as faculty rather than those that do not reflect the immense value that we bring to Calbright each and every day for our students. We believe that our students deserve the best, and because of this, we value authentic collaboration and have scheduled ongoing labor management meetings to continue building a relationship with Calbright that will support the college in addressing mission-critical issues and hope that this authentic collaboration extends beyond these meetings. We hope to bring more reports of the victories we've achieved together for students. We'd like to express our gratitude and appreciation to Calbright leadership for partnering with CFA in this complex, evolving and transformational work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the public forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard at this time?
There is no public comment, President.
Thank you. The business of the Board of Trustees is now complete, and we can adjourn. Thank you for your participation. Four minutes, not bad for a trial run. Um, and also just as a housekeeping item for those members who are part of the executive um search, that meeting is going to begin at twelve-thirty so that folks can have a bio break, grab something to eat. Um, and so we we will convene that at twelve-thirty. Thank you so much um to the staff and to the members.